Follow this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing as Josh Wetzow from Calvary Baptist leads us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day that you blessed us with. We thank you for our community that we live in. We thank you for these leaders who've come here to do the business of our community. God, we pray for your continued blessing, that you will continue to help Monticello grow and continue to reach new people and continue to be the blessing that it has been. We pray for the meeting tonight. May God give these individuals wisdom and just steer their hearts and minds to make the decisions appropriate for our community. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt, here. Ms. Lively, Mr. Denise, Mr. Woodham, Mr. Reed, Mr. Burris, Mr. Coon, Mr. Broderick, Mr. Brock, and Mr. Pierce. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public participation, in-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior commencement of the meeting and must address counsel from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Anyone rob? Thank you. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comments by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Is there anyone?
There is one person like Steve, Mayor.
And who that is?
Steve Schruffler.
Steve Schruffler, Mr. Schruffler, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make the same comment that I had during the planning and zoning meeting regarding the comprehensive plan. I would encourage you all to look carefully at that. Some of the discussion that occurred the other night was disparaging. I don't think it's very realistic to expect the city of Monticello to grow to 18,000 people anytime soon, and I think it's futile for us to try to project out that far. If the rest of the comprehensive plan is that inaccurate, then the whole thing is suspect. I was impressed with the way the fellows, a couple of them mentioned us watching the city of Mohammed. Larry, you've been around long enough. You may recall that 30 years ago, a topic of conversation was always, we are going to watch Mohammed very carefully to make sure that we don't ever, ever repeat the mistakes they've made there. And so the zoning board and the planning commission over the last 30 years, 15 of which, you know, I served on the zoning board, have looked carefully at other communities too, but Mohammed in particular, because we sure didn't want to end up in the predicaments that they've had over the years. So I was glad to know that the planning commission members picked up on that and were, it was something that was on their minds in considering this. But like I said, it's not very realistic to expect that, not just in our lifetimes, but in our grandkids' lifetimes, that Monticello grow to 18,000. And if it does, heaven help us, because you know what that would bring with it. So anyway, that's all. I just wanted to point that out to you and make sure that you are aware of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Moving on, consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report claims dated July 11, 2023 through July 24, 2023. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, July 10, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none. Jill, I need a roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Mayor's report. Registration for the Monticello Boot Camp Small Business Development Program will open August 1st. This program is free to participants and open to anyone who wants to expand their business knowledge. More information or registration can be found at monticellobootcamp.com. Allerton Park Concert Series brings you a reggae concert on Saturday, August 5th from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on the Gatehouse Lawn. Hyatt County Trailblazers is hosting the Second Annual Ranch Rodeo on Saturday, August 5th at 7:00 p.m. Several downtown businesses are hosting a Sunday Sundays event on West Washington Street with live music and shopping on Sunday, August 6th from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Eli Field is hoping, hoping, hosting a Linei Superjets, a high-speed model jet airshow, August 10th through 12th out at Eli Field. And Monticello Main Street is bringing you Music on Main on Saturday, August 12th. The Peter Taharina Jazz Nunez will perform on the Courthouse Lawn from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., followed by open mic night. Kirby Medical Center is sponsoring the movie Aladdin on the square at Sunset. Moving on to new business. Ordinance 2023-40, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Patricia Runn concerning the property located at 109 East Main Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie Jo.
Yep, so for the next six action items, they all have to do with the moving big grant and those RDAs. So there'll be a lot of ditto going on, but if you are familiar, I'm sure you are, we're in our third year of this program. This is the sixth round of grant applications that we've been considering. The review committee actually had 12 submitted this round, and the six that are before you tonight are the ones they recommend, either by the highest score or the most, they feel are most eligible for these funds. And we have about $47,000 to allocate towards this round. So the first one, Patricia Runn, that is for the former step-in building where PAQ is currently housed in. That building was constructed in 1924, and PAQ moved there in 2016. They did some substantial remodeling. The roof is remaining, so it is a contributing structure international historic district for downtown. And they are proposing a estimate project cost of about $18,000, and so this would be 50% of the total cost up to $9,269.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-40, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Patricia Runn concerning the property located at 109 East Main Street, Monticello, Illinois?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? This now is the time.
So I just reiterate what I brought up previous meetings. November 30th looks like the deadline for them. Does that feel like that's a reasonable deadline? Is that just something we want to revisit if they aren't completed by then?
So they all know going in, they have about a five-month construction window. Obviously, when we first started this program, we had the challenges with COVID for labor shortage, supply shortage, everyone was backed up. The council at the time felt that, knowing that still, not even a few, but knowing that still, they would like the opportunity for the applicant to come back before and ask for an extension. Reason for that is, we don't want to dedicate all the funds for the year and then not have the project completed. So this kind of gives us a little more checks and balances for the program.
Then you're ready for the next round, which will be the first of the year.
Yep.
All right.
Anyone else?
Just a quick question on the business districts since it's expanded now. Are those businesses now eligible for?
So they will be eligible. The city won't actually start collecting funds from those extra areas until October.
Okay.
Even though you start paying in July, it takes three months to get to us. So they will actually become eligible January 1st.
Okay.
So we're going to kind of tweak the policy and the application to be a little more appropriate to some of the areas. Obviously, we're still interested in downtown and having some attention towards that. So the review committee and I are kind of working on how we can not forget one over the other, you know, make it a little more fair. It's every year we think of something else we add, you know, just a little more reasonably.
Yeah, because that's what I kind of understood, was more of a, you know, the downtown area, trying to re體化 that.
Absolutely.
And as it's expanded, obviously, your other areas.
Right. And we, again, we have some worthy projects inside and outside downtown. That's one of the primary reasons we wanted to expand it, because so many businesses were wanting to participate, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2023-41, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Lafayette Square Monticello LLC concerning the property located at 210 South Market Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
So this is actually for the Hyatt County Extension Building. They are the tenant in that building. The landlord would like to, again, replace the roof. I say this every part sexy, but they're an awesome thing to replace. Because when the roof goes, everything else goes quicker. But they also would like to do some exterior work, painting, soft fascia, and then some interior improvements as well. So their estimated project cost is $35,000. This would be recommended reimbursement of 50% up to $10,000, which is the max.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-41?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Callie Jo. Hearing or seeing none, a roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2023-42, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Todd &amp; Josie Baker concerning the property located at 200 South Market Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Absolutely. So obviously, not in our historic district, but certainly a historic building. They would like to replace 17 windows upstairs and the door on the second floor, and the estimated project cost is just over $31,000. Recommended reimbursement of 50% up to $10,000.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, roll call, please.
Need a motion?
I didn't do a motion?
No.
Got him.
Been gone too long.
You were on vacation.
No, I wasn't. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
How about a second?
Second.
Thanks. How can we have a vote?
You sure?
How about a roll call?
All right.
Everyone now.
Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
And Mr. Brock?
Yes.
See, I spent two weeks purging my mind so I wouldn't make mistakes at council meetings. Obviously, it didn't work.
Didn't take.
Well, I'm really purging. Moving on to ordinance 2023-43, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Extreme Entertainment concerning the property located at 109 North Charter Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Another over 100-year-old property. This is the cottage that's kind of between the old Horreicher Building and Subway. It's kind of tucked back a little bit. Extreme Mechanical, or excuse me, Extreme Entertainment purchased the property this spring and has done substantial improvement so far. The project for this particular purpose consists of removing three windows and the AC. We're actually be increasing the windows back to the original size and then doing some soft fascia, makes new work, and then doing patio landscaping off in the west side of the building, I guess west, southwest side of the building. There's kind of just a grassy area. He'd like someplace for his tenants to kind of have to enjoy. Estimated project cost is $31,949. Recommended reimbursement is 50% up to $10,000.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
That is a residential rental program. Okay.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-43?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, last chance. Any questions? Comments? Hearing or seeing none, I'll have a roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2023-44, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and the Brown Bag Incorporated concerning the property located at 212 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Thank you. Everyone knows where the Brown Bag is. That building is just over 130 years old, so it's seen its years. The owners of the Brown Bag are interested in doing some improvements to the dining room side, updating and installing some new ductwork. That'll make it quieter, more efficient. Again, this is a property international historic district. Their estimated project cost is $8200. The grant committee is recommending approval of 50% up to $3,275. And I will say for this one and the following one, they weren't allowed to award the full grant amount. They both felt they were worthy projects. The other one just scored higher and they ran out of money. But both applicants were, they wanted to still be able to award a vote. So both certainly grateful to hear that this is an opportunity for them.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-44?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, any roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
And Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2023-45, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Lilly's Flooring Incorporated concerning the property located at 115 West Main Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
So this property actually took advantage of the first round that we did for this program. It's one of our oldest buildings in downtown. It's 163 years old, obviously determined by National Register. And they have not had AC all year, so I hope that tugs at your heartstrings, especially this week. So they would like to update that HGC unit in their property. I feel like as soon as I call tomorrow, they'll be like, yeah, they'll be here this afternoon. But estimated project cost is $14,657, and the grant committee is recommending reimbursement of 50% up to $4,725.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-45?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
I think in anticipation, they have moved forward on that project, and I don't blame them. There is a brand-new air conditioner on the back of the building, so.
That's good.
So I think they were, they waited as long as they could.
Sounds good to me. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
And Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
You hesitated. I thought, oh, God, would I do this?
I was getting my number right.
I got you. Thank you. Resolution 2023-46, a resolution adopting a strategic plan for the years 2023 to 2026. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. So many of you, and hopefully all of you, participated in some shape, but as you know, the last 18 months, we've been going through an update to our comprehensive plan and strategic plan. We partnered with Northern Illinois University Center for Governmental Studies and Ebert Knox Planners. Mim Evans from NIU is here, and I believe Todd and Adalik is on virtually to kind of chime in on those, that process and where we're at. So the strategic, I don't want to take over your talking booth, so you come on up.
Come up to the table, please.
You're good on that strategic plan. Okay, okay. So the strategic plan is kind of the opportunity, the five-year plan, when the council is creating policy and budgeting to figure out what the benchmarks are that they're going to be achieving the goals.
I want to say that it was wonderful to do the two together. My name is Mim Evans, and I'm with NIU Center for Governmental Studies, and Todd is out there in the air. He will participate as we get to some of the other details here. But anyway, it was wonderful to do both plans together, and I hope you noticed as you look through it that they were cross-referenced and that now you have, rather than doing, as most communities do, first one and then the other, and then having them not quite sync up, you now have two documents that will work together for you for the next however many years. They both seem relevant, so I think that worked very well. And the level of participation in both strategic plan, and many of you were involved in that, and in the comprehensive plan, which the community as a whole was very involved in, was really impressive. So a wonderful community you have here, and thank you for allowing us to participate in that with you.
Okay, comments or questions on the strategic plan?
I just think the city does a wonderful job of, when the budget comes out, looking ahead to see not only what this year's budget is going to look like, but what the anticipated projects are going to be, and account for that. And having this document and having all the input, I'm sure will help shape what that budget process looks like. I mean, all the time that I've been on the council, I've been really impressed with just how forward-thinking that the city is on those big projects that are going to be items. So just kudos to the city on this.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-46, a resolution adopting a strategic plan for the years 2023 through 2026?
So moved.
I was wondering what everyone was.
I was, I didn't, I don't know who was going to go first. That gave me heart.
Comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
And Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I want to give kudos to Northern and to others that participate. I thought it was a great, great adventure. It really was. I think we talked a lot and figured a lot of things out, so.
I'll share that with all the staff involved.
Please do.
To hear it.
Okay, moving on to ordinance 2023-47, an ordinance adopting the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Update for the city of Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Mayor, so this is the longer-range plan, the 15 to 20 year. This is, as Mim said, the community's plan. There's a lot of community input. They're the ones that say, council, this is what we want to see. So again, I'll shut up and let you talk.
Well, this one, you all didn't get the opportunity to be intimately involved with, so for this one, we thought it was worthwhile to have a brief presentation to just hit some of the highlights, and then Todd and I can answer some questions, whatever you would like to know a little bit more about. Next slide, please. So these are the things that we wanted to cover tonight, and it's just quickly go through each of them, so take a minute and you can read through that. And then we'll go on to the next slide, please. So this is how the plan was developed, the steps that we went through. And if you look at that, and if you've had a chance to look through the document, you'll see that that first item up there, inventory and data collection, is really, makes up the whole first part of the document, is explaining all of that. And that was research that we did with assistance from the city and from some of the experts here in town. But it was a research effort, not an input effort. And then we moved on to the community input phase, which we'll talk about in more detail in just a minute. Those next two steps, the vision and goal setting and the plan preparation, this is really where the task force, which was wonderful, that you all had assembled, did a lot of work. This was really their task to gather all of this together, to pull the information together, and this is where the bulk of their time was spent. And then finally, where we're at today, which is the final review and adoption. Next slide, please. I want to talk a little bit about public input, because as Callie was saying, this is really the community's plan. We facilitated it. We did the background research to give them the information to make their decisions about where they wanted to see the community go, but all the ideas in there came from them, not from us saying, this is what we think you should do. We answered questions and suggested how to make those things happen, but it's the ideas of the task force and the community as a whole. So first, I want to commend the task force that met four times, each time for an hour and a half, and worked through all of the steps. Your community survey went very well, 457 responses for a community this size, that's really outstanding. And that's, don't think of it in terms of population, think of it in terms of households, because it was one response per household, and you see that that is really very good. Business survey 52, again, outstanding for a community this size. For a community bigger than this size, it would still be a good response, probably twice as much as we typically get, so very good. The website, again, this was, I hope some of you got a chance to visit the website. Great opportunity to leave comments and keep track of what was going on. We have found that project websites, which we only started using within the last few years, have really added a wonderful dimension to community input, and that, again, generated a lot of information. And then the city, of course, was posting information on the city website and through social media. Next slide, please. So once all of that information had been gathered, then the task force really went to work. They had already provided input into the research phase, but now they were tasked with actually coming up with a vision. And we presented all of that community input to them and also the past visions that the city has had, and they came up with this vision here. And the thing that strikes me, and it's right there in the first sentence, is that there was an emphasis on balance. Balance in terms of growth versus retaining our small-town character. Balance in terms of each part of the community should have equal opportunity and equal access and all of that, and balance between growth and protecting your natural resources and your built resources. So I have to say, one thing they characterized it was that this task force was very focused on balance. Next slide, please. Once that vision had been agreed to, then they really started to move towards, okay, how do we make this happen? And these were the tasks that they had before them, to come up with a set of goals, which And you all know that if you participate in this strategic plan, into objectives. And finally, because we want this to be a document that is an ongoing tool and can be implemented into actual strategies. Next slide, please. There were nine goals, and these are goals that are common to comprehensive plans throughout the state of Illinois. It's recommended that comprehensive plans hit these items. Not every community does. You don't have to, but these are the suggested ones. And the thoughts of the task force fell within these nine goals. So give you a minute to take a look at that one. And then if you could go to the next slide, you'll see the last four. There you go. So you can see they range from something as concrete as land use to something as idea-oriented as communications. So they're pretty comprehensive. Next slide, please. We then asked the task force to prioritize the objectives under each goal. And we have found that this has been helpful to city councils, who then can look at that, and you have limited resources. And as you were saying, you have to make decisions about where to spend your money, and that this can be a useful tool to see what the task force thought were the things that were most important. We asked them to think about the cost, of course, and the cost in terms of not just dollars, but also time or opportunities that would be given up elsewhere. What was this project going to cost? The level of support within the community for pursuing that particular objective. And finally, what would the impact be in the community? Is this something that may be easy to do? There may be a lot of support, but maybe it wasn't going to make a lot of difference? Or maybe something else cost a lot, but it was going to have a big impact? So maybe that should be... So those are the kinds of discussions that they had as they went through and prioritized these different objectives. And this is just an example from economic development. You've seen all of them within the document. Next slide, please. We then went beyond that to implementation. Again, I used the same example, the economic development. And this is where we hope this really becomes useful for staff and also for all of you, as you become involved with some specific projects. You can see there your objective, and you can see underneath where it coincides with something within the strategic plan. That first one up there shows you the strategic plan objectives underneath it. Actually, all three of those do up there. Not everything matches up, but on this particular slide, it did. Then the strategies, which were specific actions that could be taken. And finally, some resources to help you get started, so that you decide to tackle something like a small-business incubator, not a good example, since you already know quite a bit about that. But if you did do that, you wouldn't have to just say, okay, so what do we do now? You would have some resources there to look at. So some of these others may be something new to you, and you might will find that helpful. So with all of this done, the guts of the plan were there. What wasn't there was translating it onto the ground. And that's what a comprehensive land use plan has to do. It provides you the guidance in terms of policy, but also it needs to give you that map to work with. And I'm going to turn it over to Todd, who prepared the map. But you can go to the next slide, and actually, the next one after that. Todd, if you want to take over here?
Sure. Can I, I hope everyone can hear me. So yes, thanks, ma'am. And thank you, City Council, for having me and I present to you. My name is Todd Manalak. I'm an urban planner. I have about 22, almost 23 years of urban planning experience across Illinois. This is, I've done close, a little over 20 comprehensive plans. And I was really excited to work on this one in Monticello. It's a really good process. And the task force that we worked with for the comprehensive plan, they were great in terms of their input, their enthusiasm, and all their feedbacks. So it was just great to have them. One thing I want to do before jumping into these land use scenarios that you see on the slide is just take a little bit of time just to respond to the public comment provided earlier and clarify the population projections that you actually see on the slide ahead of you. They're not intended to mean that Monticello will ever, actually ever, reach those projections. Population projections are generated by the amount of new residential uses proposed in each scenario. For example, on this slide, you'll see three different scenarios. Scenario A is low growth, so about 21% growth, a growth rate of 21%. Scenario B is higher, at 190% growth rate. And Scenario C is very aggressive, so over 450%. So clearly, that's very scary and very aggressive. But we did want to show three different scenarios, just to show that they're... I mean, these are three out of countless scenarios that you could really consider. But we just wanted to show at least three to the task force, so that they could actually get a general sense of what growth looks like in visual form, so those three maps that you see ahead of you. So the yellow that you see on each of those three maps, that's the residential growth. And then from that yellow, all that, the new residential shown on these maps, it generates a population, so the quantitative aspect of that. So I'll just go through each of those in a second. But so the main thing is just to say that even though the task force... So when we presented these to the task force, they preferred a growth scenario between A and B. So A, again, was about 21% growth rate, which would tack on about 1,310 new residents on top of your current population of about 6,200. So your ultimate population in this scenario would be about 7,500. Scenario B, moderate growth at 190% growth rate, you would generate over 11,000 new residents, which is almost double what your current population is. So your new population would be about 18,000, close to 18,000. Scenario C is highly aggressive. All that residential, that yellow you see on that map, all that residential would generate about 28,000 new residents. So more than four times, close to five times, as great as your current population of 6,000. Your ultimate population would be 34, over 34,000, if you ever grew at that aggressive growth rate. One thing to keep in mind is that most communities will, even though the preferred scenario is somewhere between A and B, you're probably going to be closer as, from year to year, you're going to be closer to that 21%, or probably even lower than that, that's shown in Scenario A, even over the course of the 15- to 20-year timeframe that a comp plan covers. So even though the preferred scenario was somewhere between A and B, you're probably going to be less than A, just based on growth trends and just how the market responds to housing. And then there's recessions, there's like the housing bubble, stuff like that. Any, there's just various factors that will impact your growth. So but one thing to know is that the new residential shown on these maps are meant to guide where the city believes residential uses should go. So when a developer proposes a new residential project to the city, the city knows where it's an appropriate place to put residential. Or it doesn't even have to be a residential, if it's commercial, so that's red. The red color is on the map, or the purple-magenta color is industrial growth. So anytime a developer comes and presents something to Callie and your staff, Callie and your staff can say, hey, our map shows it should go here. And if they propose it elsewhere, they can justify it, saying it should go in this spot and not another spot. So it provides you greater cover and a stronger leg to stand on for this map. And another thing I did mention is that, again, to emphasize, is that even though that the comp plan covers about a 15- to 20-year timeframe, one thing that you often do with your comp plan, and Monticello has done this, is you revisit and revise your comp plan every three to five years. So if you, in five years from now, if you look and see we didn't really quite grow as fast as we thought we would, or we grew faster than we thought we would, then you can go back, revise your land use map, and do that, do this process over again. And sometimes you can just update the land use map and not the entire plan. Some people, or some towns, do the entire plan every five years. It just depends on what your community needs are and what resources you have at that time. So again, if you go to the next slide, I'll actually show the preferred growth scenario that the task force preferred or selected out of the scenarios, A, B, and C. So the preferred scenario, again, was between A and B. So it, again, it shows 138% growth rate. But just keep in mind, as I said before, it's more likely that you're going to be closer to that 21% growth rate, maybe slightly higher or slightly lower, just because of your historic growth rates over time. But we also just want to show that, again, if you're looking at the visual where all the yellow is on this map, all the residential growth, it just shows that when the city gets development plans presented to them, presented to you, you know where you can tell developers, this is where we preferred it to go. If you didn't have this map, then the developer could kind of dictate where they want it to go, and that kind of presents stickier subjects. It just presents stickier matters, but having a map like this gives you a stronger leg to stand on. But one thing to keep in mind is that in five, 10, 15, 20 years, the timeframe for this comp plan, if you only achieve 10% of this, or 50% of this, or 100% of this, it kind of depends on what the market supports and what, how housing markets, how development kind of goes in the region and in your town over time. So again, you may not ever achieve that, the amount of growth that the model shows. It's just to kind of present you with different scenarios, and this is the one that the task force was most comfortable with. So I just wanted to kind of tee that up and provide that background. And we could provide more clarification in the plan. Sophie, need to revise, add some additional language to the plan before it's finalized. We can definitely do that to clarify that. So thank you for your time.
The other thing I wanted to point out that you might have noticed from the prior... If you can go back one slide, please? Is that the residential area has shifted from the southeast to the northwest part of the map. And that was the task force's recommendation also, that the emphasis be put on the northwest part and leave that southeast part as prime farmland. So that was their suggestion, and it's reflected there. So the next step, if you all have any questions for Todd or for me, we'd be happy to answer them, otherwise.
I was going to say, well, suggestions for residential growth, and the strategic plan talked about a diversity in terms of what that is. So as we get plans, and just to keep in mind that we need low-income, mid-income, high-income, and we need that diversity, that's what the strategic plan said. How do you kind of go about that? Because developers will come to you and say, this is what we want to do with this area. We don't have a, maybe we've got more high-end properties than we do those mid-level. What's your suggestion in terms of guidance?
Well, first, I'll say that we're in the midst of a housing study. So that will provide you, where we're digging into the housing question in much more detail. And we'll have that for you to present before the end of the year. So that will give you some of that answer. But to your question, which is a good one, how do you really promote that diversity? There's a lot of parts to it that, in general, I think a community has to get involved with. One is to think about your zoning as the very first thing. You can determine a lot of that density and price ranges and all of that by how big those lots are and what's allowed where and all of that. So that's number one. And revamping your zoning ordinance to match up with your comprehensive plan will probably be one of your tasks that you undertake fairly soon. That usually is something to take a look at. So that would be one, would be zoning. The next thing would be, is if you have other kinds of rules and regulations, which I'm sure you do, that influence housing, whether it's fees, or incentives, or whatever it is that you've got, your toolbox can be expanded or modified or whatever, so that you can encourage developers to come in with certain kinds of plans. And then there's two other things that I would say. One is to be open to innovation, because there's a lot of innovative housing out there. And we'll present some examples of that when we do the housing study. And not that many communities, when it comes right down to it, go for it. But think about it, and some of those ideas are pretty fascinating. And the other thing is community education. Many communities have the best of intentions to accommodate people at all income levels. And then finally, when it comes down to that project, and I'm sure it's happened, some of you have seen this, it comes down to that multifamily project that the community itself is very concerned about it. And sometimes that project goes away as a result. So I would say that from the very beginning, work with the community to have them educated and buy in to what it is, the advantages of the balanced community that you're striving for, so that when that project shows up, they're prepared. So those are just some general ideas. We'll have a lot more specifics.
And I notice I get the Zillow reports every month, and the property values are going up and up in Monticello, which is, for homeowners, that's great. But, you know, I think we all kind of feel like the housing in that mid-level, we just don't have the inventory for it, so.
Right. Well, we'll have more detail for you.
That's great.
Comments, questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for having us. We really enjoyed working with your community, and continue to.
I thought the whole event was awesome.
It's really nice to hear.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-47, an ordinance adopting the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Update for the City of Monticello, Illinois? For a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions, city staff or hearingers? Pardon me?
One thing I didn't mention in my introduction was, we did, State Statute requires us to hold a public hearing, and we did do that at the last Planning and Zoning Board meeting, which required, and they did recommend approval.
They did, okay, thank you. That's fine.
Practice.
I know, I know.
Not just you.
It's Monday.
I understand.
Roll call?
Yeah, please.
Ms. Booth? Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
That was awful.
Hearing on Alderman's reports. Mr. Kuhn?
Who's the...
Thank you. Mr. Broderick?
No.
Manuel Brock?
Only to congratulate the street department, Mr. Gavarsik, on its men's valiant effort to finish State Street in time for things to start. They're working under adverse conditions with temperatures. They're doing a great job. The pores look good, the curbs look good. They know what they're doing, but they've had a tough...
It's been...
Collecting all the downed trees and trash and with that. But they're gaining on it. They're getting close. And I think we're going to be able to see some asphalt get laid one of these days in a timely fashion. So congratulations to all of them for their efforts.
Okay.
Just a question. The fire out there at the landscape, what happened?
I'm sure.
I mean, it could have been just like piles of mulch and stuff sitting there. It might have been.
Spontaneous.
Yeah.
City staff hadn't burned out there for over a week.
Yeah, no, I don't think it was an ember.
Yeah. We're not sure. It's just on fire.
It was big.
Right. And I saw it from Michigan, because I had never feared it. Probably saved us a few bucks.
My thought was, why didn't we do that before? But I was pretty sure it didn't happen on purpose.
You can't do that on purpose.
It's not the preferred EK.
That's against the state, against the rules.
Definitely was not the Canadian smoke.
No. But I did notice on social media that one of the sites, they're accusing the city of burning.
Of course.
And no one else can. So I just want everyone to know that that's not what happened. In fact, I drove out there before I came here this evening. It's still smoking. It's still smoking.
It'll be for a few more.
So probably, there's a lot there.
The grid here closed too, I think.
Pardon?
The puddings closed too.
Yeah.
Some of them...
Driving range.
Range.
That's...
Yeah.
That's...
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Very well.
Thinking we live in a farming community. Bales of hay catching on fire.
Yeah, exactly.
Happens.
Well, they didn't have a great day one, where they did. Up on 47, where it burned and burnt. I mean, there was a lot of stuff. Thomas, I think. John?
A couple of things. Terry's not here, but I wanted to thank him for giving me the information on the... I brought up the budget for tree removal and stuff like that. He got me a list of all the trees. And right now, there's only like 10 open on this report. So I don't know if who goes out, looks at trees that might need to be taken down. Jim, do you have any input on that?
Usually, planning the...
The mayor will get a call from someone that says that.
Those trees, just for your own knowledge, usually equate to 2,500, $5,000.
I know, I've had a tree taken down. It cost me $5,000. Yeah.
Okay. John, they try to hold all that stuff and get everything else.
I understand. I mean, they've got a list, and they're taking out a whole bunch. So I just wanted to thank him for that list and...
They're great job doing that.
Kind of seeing where we're at on all that. And also on a community note, and looking at this strategic planning and all that stuff, about, you know, things that the community can do to draw people in. Last month, I went to a race in Emporia, Kansas, bicycle race. It's called gravel racing. And this is a perfect community for where there's just, you know, undeveloped roads, gravel roads, farm roads, things like that. And that's, people ride their bikes. These are 100-mile races, 200-mile races, all sorts of stuff. I did a 100-miler last Saturday in Eminence, Indiana, a community of like 60 people. It's more of a...
Ragbra?
What's that?
Ragbra?
No, 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 no. That's a whole different deal.
Okay, there.
One-day race. I'm talking about the community. It's more of a...
Head spot in the road.
Yeah, it's not just one little town. It's the whole community and the whole area there. But anyway, the last, they've only been doing it for like three or four years. They, 22, they had 600 riders that come into their little community. This year, they had capped it at 800 riders. Reggie Miller, NBA player from Indiana Pacers, he rode in it. He did a shake, they called shakeout rides beforehand. So it brings people to the community. Had over 250 people just show up to go riding with him for an hour, stuff like that. It's, and most of the benefits that they, the money is that they bring in benefits, charities from the school district, athletic department, food banks, and other, you know, community involvement. So, and we have the perfect community with the kind of roads and stuff that we have around here, the ruralness of it. We're close to Champaign, we're close to Springfield, we're close to Bloomington. We're close to Champaign, we're close to Springfield, we're close to Bloomington, you know. This race that I went to last weekend in this tiny town in about 30 minutes southwest of Indianapolis, we had people coming in from, you know, Minnesota and stuff like that. People, it's a big deal, a lot of people are doing it, so on a personal basis, I'm going to look at trying to develop something here in Monticello, and then, you know, help bring folks to this community.
Couldn't have had it. Seriously, I mean, that's a positive. We appreciate those kind of ideas. Anyone else have anything that they might have forgotten? Eric, you didn't forget anything?
No.
Police chief's report.
We did take possession of three squad cars that were with the amendment, so we are in the process of getting those outfitted in on the streets to replace some Chevy and Polas that are well past their prime, so...
Everyone worried that.
We are starting to use social media a little bit more on that comprehensive plan by, you know, social media user by far. My wife takes care of that stuff. But, you know, 47% of people get city information through social media, or maybe even a little bit higher, once you get people sharing and everything else. So we are trying to do wise that a little bit more. We had incident in X Park. We can have a go. Within two hours, we are able to get something out, so we tap down on the rumors and innuendos. My rule of thumb is usually, I'll try to run that by city admin and or mayor, just so they know. I put it out, Callie's been very helpful getting that on the city page, and then once we get area-wide to finagle our email, shortly before I put it out on the Facebook page, I will email the alderperson's. So you know, so you hear directly from me, you don't have to look it up on Facebook to figure out what the heck's going on. We're still trying to get some things done with email, but as soon as I get that.
I have a question. I know the answer, but for the Thursday, I've heard more than once that you've shut off commenting on the Monticello Police Department page, and just, would you enlighten the council on what that is? It's not hiding.
You know, we shut down comments because people report things through comments, and they think, oh, I reported it. No, that's not a report, sissy. We don't respond to Facebook if that's the case, a quarter of the talent would be in jail. So we, we had a lot, there were issues. The Attorney General's office pretty much says you have to allow all comments, or you deny all comments. We deny. You can share it, you can put it on your own personal page, yell scream, say it's awesome, thumbs up, whatever you want to do, but I don't want to be in a predicament of, let's say we have this thing in X Park, and all of a sudden, people say, oh, well, that was little Billy Smith, and Billy Smith was the one that did that. Then we run into a predicament of, we're talking about the June Mal case, we are providing an outlet for it. I'd rather not go down that road. So we just nip it in the bud on what we can control. Once we get out of it, we cannot control it, but we can control what the city has controlling.
Okay.
Thank you.
I assume you're talking about tactical vest?
Pardon?
Are you talking about tactical vest?
Awesome. I'm sorry.
Let me bring that up.
Thanks, Rob, appreciate it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hope not. See you in a couple of weeks.